The meeting to order for the Raymore City Council's special meeting for Monday, April the 8th, 2019. Could I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Abdalgobodan.
Here.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Berensen.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Present.
Councilmember Serko.
Present.
Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Present.
Councilmember Townsend.
Present.
Mayor Turnbull.
President. Could you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, it gives me great pleasure to, under our presentation portion, to recognize our public safety telecommunications with National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. If I could have the two that are present with us tonight, please step forward to find people.
Good to see you again.
So, the proclamation tonight reads, whereas when an emergency occurs, seconds count and the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the skill of our public safety telecommunications in obtaining accurate information for citizens who contact the Raymore Police Department Communication Center, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and must be available 24 hours a day, and whereas public safety telecommunications are a vital link for police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas the public safety telecommunications of the Raymore Police Department have contributed substantially to the overall safety of our community by demonstrating compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their duties. Now therefore, I, Christopher P. Turnbull, Mayor of the city of Raymore, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2019, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Raymore in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe and witness whereof I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Raymore to be affixed this 8th day of April, 2019. So to add to that, as you know, I served in law enforcement for many years, and my daughter is a public safety telecommunicator for the city of Leewood, so I have a special affection for these people and the work that they do. What's special about our dispatchers here for, so I don't have to say the whole thing over again, I'll just use dispatchers if you don't mind, is that our dispatchers in our county at our five PSAPs, you heard me say on many occasions, police officers, firefighters, and paramedics, and that they're entrusted with their safety. The thing of it is, is that they have this special emergency medical dispatch training that a lot of dispatchers in our area do not have, and so that they can provide that kind of special attention to a caller on 911 who's sitting there with a baby that's not breathing anymore, or a mother who's having a baby, or a father who's having a heart attack. They can walk people through, reassure them of the work that they can do to prep for the arrival of the paramedics and the firefighters that will be there shortly to take care of them. And I just, I've always been amazed at how these people train and are able to retain all this special information for little that they're compensated for, because I know all of us in public safety have come to love and care for the dispatchers who don't necessarily come in harm's way when it comes to the actual scene itself, but carry an emotional baggage that can have an effect on them. And I know that they've created a peer support group through the Mid-America Regional Council, and our dispatchers are participating in that as well, and I hope that that's proven to be beneficial to you all and help you through some of the traumatic things that you all have to do. So just naming a week doesn't seem sufficient enough to recognize them, but that's what we're doing here, and I want to congratulate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have no personal appearances, so I will move on to staff reports. Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, your honor. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a staff report for the community development.
Thank you, sir. Just want to provide the council an update on a couple of upcoming meetings. The Planning and Zoning Commission will meet next on May 7th. They have canceled their April 16th meeting. On May 7th, they'll consider at a public hearing the preliminary plan for the Dean commercial property, the 40 acres that the Dean family owns at the southwest quarter of 58 Highway and Foxwoods Drive. This has been on the agenda for several months, and we finally are comfortable in this project moving forward, so go Planning Commission on May 7th, and hopefully if it receives a recommendation that evening, then it'd move on to council for final action on May 13th to allow that project to continue forward. Then also on the same date of May 7th, our Board of Adjustments will meet. There is a request for a variance for a couple of the undeveloped lots that remain in Shadowwood. Shadowwood's down to 11 undeveloped lots. There are two lots along Mulberry Street that they're having a little difficulty in fitting the homes on. They're requesting a minor adjustment to the setback line off of Mulberry Street. There will be no driveways off of Mulberry, but the home would be slightly closer to the roadway than the 30-foot that's currently allowed. That would, it would not extend any closer to the other homes that exist on Mulberry further to the, further to the west. So they are requesting the variance that evening to develop those two lots, and hopefully to get close to closing out that subdivision's development. So those are the items currently scheduled for action. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Jim. Is there any questions of staff? Hearing none? Mr. Fearborn?
Thank you, Mr. Catterett. I would ask Mr. Eeke to make a report.
Thank you, sir. With our new council member and the newly re-elected members also, would like to schedule a time for a group photo, as well as any updates to individual photos that council members would like. We have tentatively set the date of April 22nd, that Monday before the council meeting. If it'd be possible to have everyone here 20 minutes before the regular council meeting, we'll be able to get any individual photos, as well as the group photo for the new council. I'd be open to any questions, or if there are any concerns about that date.
Mr. Holman.
Before someone hits me with it, yes, I will wear a coat and tie that evening.
We will send out a reminder as well. Thank you.
That's good. And Mr. Townsend, if you can give him a call too. Okay. Give him a call too. Okay, Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, Mr. Eeke. I would ask Chief Zimmerman to make a report for the police department.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. In just a second, I'm going to ask Mr. Catterett to play a brief audio recording from February 15th around noon, but let me set the stage just really quickly before he plays this. Probably not a lot of people remember what the weather was like on that day, except for our dispatchers. We got about five inches of snow that day. The high temperature was 17. We had freezing fog and 25 mile an hour winds. So I'm going to ask Mr. Catterett to play a really short audio from our dispatchers working that day.
911, where's your emergency?
Uh, six miles outside of Belton on the Northbound Highway.
Okay. They're starting, uh, the ambulance.
My account was 10 vehicles. Yeah. And a semi.
Can you tell if anyone's injured?
Um, I'm not sure. There's someone talking to the person in the driver's seat now of the car. I think they're okay. I just totaled the front end of the car, and they're in the middle of the highway.
So they are blocking traffic?
Yeah.
All right. Let me get you to Kennesaw County, they'll be the ones to report that to, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
938, we can respond to vans like here. 905, West Foxwoods Drive, Little Eagle accident, police gonna be in the front.
911, where's your emergency?
Uh, on Highway.
He's at Northbound 49, 451, 168. Yeah, what's going on there?
Uh, the highway, I'm sitting in the bill.
Uh, I live on 211st Street. Someone went on the road into our driveway. They can't get themselves back out.
Is it, are you in a Honda Civic?
Okay. Where at on 211th you live?
Honda Accord, okay.
Where at on 211th you live?
Okay. It's the one up there.
Yeah, 12003, East 211th Street.
Okay, I got you, thank you.
Can I have your name and your phone number?
Yeah, Ben Justin, 913-280-5506. Is there anybody injured?
And is anyone injured as far as you can tell?
No, he tried to dig himself out.
All right. I'll get someone up there as soon as I can.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And what was her name?
Dawn Sherwood.
So he's not there, he just kind of ran off the road?
Yeah, he ran off the road, now he's stuck in our driveway, so now we want to get out, we can't get out.
What kind of car is it?
It's a red, a burgundy van. Ford van.
Okay. All right, we'll get somebody up there as soon as we can.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Frame work from Engine 1.
Engine 1.
Intrigued, Engine 1's in service.
In service till 3:08. 934-23.
Thank you. Did you copy where it said? 934-23. What did the party say where they were at?
She should be right in front of the business. One of the parking spots in front or towards the other parking lot.
The reason that we selected this piece of audio, all of the confusion that the dispatchers face every single day, and so I don't expect listeners to pick out all the details. You might remember the 10-car accident that happened on I-49 that day. Our dispatchers during that period of time handled 14 incidents, which were transferring to other agencies. There were accidents, there were folks who were wanted, there were disturbance calls, there were medical emergencies, and so all of those things that they are multitasking and doing, they do 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They are handling simultaneously 911, they're handling other agencies, they are doing the things that the mayor spoke of, you know, where they're giving emergency medical instruction to individuals on the phone, and they handle that level of chaos all the time. They work 12-hour shifts, sometimes without taking a break from the console, sometimes without bathroom breaks, definitely without lunch breaks, but 12 hours a day in one space without being able to get up and walk away. So that's just one example of them, you know, multitasking and handling those types of calls. We have eight dispatchers and one working supervisor. In 2018, we handled, they handled nearly 48,000 calls, almost 10,000 of those calls were 911 emergency calls for service, and obviously almost 39,000 non-emergency calls. Fire calls, we also handled almost 42,000 calls, not 42,000, 4,200 calls for South Metro, and of course, you all will remember, we entered into an MOU with West Peculiar Fire, and now we are dispatching for them as well. So two police agencies, two fire agencies that these folks handle 24 hours a day. I thought it was interesting that Mark did an analysis of a month's worth of breakdown of data. 3,570 total calls in the month of January, which broke down to almost 116 calls a day, or almost five calls per hour. The mayor spoke about it as well, but you've heard me say many times since coming here that I started my career as a dispatcher. It'll be 40 years ago in July of this year, it's a long time, and certainly they have much more technical expertise than I ever had 40 years ago when I started, but I have the greatest respect and admiration for everything that these people do, for keeping the people in our community and especially our first responders, police, fire, and EMTs safe. So thank you so much to the ones who are here and all of the others, because I am so, so proud to be the chief of people who work so hard at their job every single day.
Thank you, chief. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Abdalgobodan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, chief. When you say calls, you mean actual phone calls, so that's not even counting any self-initiated acts from PD?
Absolutely.
Like building checks or car stops? So they're managing much more even than the number of calls that you, that you were talking about?
Yes.
Anyone else?
I would add that what was fun during that conversation that you, at Audible, you just looked at, I looked at Adrian and Richard, and they were going, or they were going, "They don't really know what's going on." And they, but they had it all sorted out. They, they live it, but they could re-live it through that audio and knew exactly what was going on. But thank you.
Yes.
Kind of to piggyback off of that, I was, I was listening, because I'm a little more familiar maybe than the rest of the council with radio traffic, but I was thinking, so how many different things can I hear going on, you know? And I didn't count as many as chief said, but just, you know, out of curiosity, I wonder, how many different incidents did the rest of the council hear happening in that short time that we were listening to? There was a car in a ditch, there was a car accident, and, you know, how many other things did anyone else pull out?
Well, and I did, I did want to say too, because as we were looking at calls to share with you all tonight, we also looked at a fairly recent call, which was a barn on fire, and probably everybody here in Raymore remembers that, because there was lots of smoke. But South Metro, we looked at that call, and it was a really great example of the kind of cooperation between agencies on that call as well, and Officer Hedrick was part of that call as well. He seems to be everywhere at all times. But I did want to say that we got a note, and they got some really awesome cookies downstairs from South Metro for their handling of that call, and a note that says, "Good afternoon, just wanted to drop a real quick note. We had a decent-sized fire last week with quite a bit of radio traffic and requests for resources and stuff. I could not have asked for things to have gone better on the dispatch side of things. The things the dispatch crew working deserves my complete gratitude and appreciation," and a big old plate of cookies apparently.
There you go. Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, chief. Reminder to the council, we do have a work session, surprise, next week, April 15th, 2019. Three items currently on the agenda for that. Annexation MOUs with Lake Winnebago and Lee Summit for the council review before we take those to the mayor of Lake Winnebago and the city manager for the city of Lee Summit, both of whom we have had preliminary positive responses from relative to this particular issue. We'll also be going through, we have finished, staff has finished the first pass of code review that started well over a year ago. We are going to be going back through now and tidying up the final presentations that will go before the council. Want to talk to the council about how you would like to see that come at you with some recommendations from staff. Last item that we'll be on is, I had advised the council that I believe it is going to be necessary to do some budget amendments associated with the harsh winter weather that we had. I'll be bringing three options to the council with recommendations relative to those budget amendments. That concludes staff reports this evening, sir.
Thank you. Any question, Mr. Fearborn? Okay, thank you, sir. We have no committee reports. We have one item under consent agenda, which is the city council minutes for March 25th, 2019. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda to include item A, city council minutes, March 25th, 2019.
I'll second the motion, sir.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the city council minutes for March 25th. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like, if I may. It's, in the past, when I've been on the council, it's been, I don't want to say tradition, but it's been common for council members to abstain when they haven't been on the council, when there's been consent agendas and unfinished businesses as it's coming up. However, it's, having attended the last three meetings and having gone through the agendas and reading everything, and with the, as I discussed earlier with Mr. Fearborn, in the Roberts Rule of Orders, if I am familiar with what's coming up, then I can vote on these items, and just as, and I think those people who know me, or have worked with me before in the council, understand that personally, I do, I don't care for abstaining. I think we're all hired, if you will, to come up here and make a decision, one way or the other, and having read these things, and frankly, having been at these meetings, both on a consent agenda and on the unfinished business, I will be voting on those.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, 8-0. Thank you. Now move on to unfinished business. Could I please have the second reading of Bill 3444 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3444 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Black &amp; McDonald, I'm sorry, it is the second reading, sir, my apologies.
Problem?
With Black &amp; McDonald for the Buckingham Court Streetlight Installation Project in the amount of $13,475, and to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve Bill 3444, award of contract, Buckingham Court, Streetlight Installation.
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you. Motion been made and seconded to approve the second reading of Bill 3444. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, 8-0. Now move on to new business. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3448 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3448 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into a guaranteed pricing contract with Little Sports Shop to provide screen printing and embroidery services.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, your honor. I would ask Mr. Mustine to make the staff report on this item.
Thanks, sir. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight before you is a recommendation for contract for our uniform t-shirts, city branded apparel for Parks and Recreation Department, as well as the Public Works Department. This also includes our league uniforms, things of that nature that we do. This was competitively bid. We received six bids, three proved to be complete bids, and we evaluated those through what we call a shopping cart or a basket of goods to compare like items, and it has proved out that Little Sports Shop is the best and lowest most responsive bid. We do have a representative here tonight, Chris Drummond. He is our, previously Little Sports held this contract. Chris is our representative for our contract. We've had excellent customer service. We're pleased to recommend this contract moving forward for another three years. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3448.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Bill 3448, award of contract, screen printing and embroidery services.
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3448. Any further discussion? Mr. Holman.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate the representative from the company being here this evening. We don't always have that. It seems like it's becoming more and more the norm, but I think it's important that the companies do show up and show that they have some skin in the game, if you will, that they are invested in at least that portion of our city's project to spend a little bit of time with us, even though you've probably been setting out in the audience. We appreciate you being here, and if we do have any questions, being able to go to the source, even though we don't have any. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. With that, is there, we have the motion on the floor, correct? And so I would, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously, 8-0. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3449 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3449 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract extension with Pepsi Beverages Company for beverage vending and supply services.
Thank you. Is there a staff report, sir?
Thanks, sir. I would ask Mr. Mustine to make staff report on this item.
Thanks, sir. Mayor, members of the council. This is a, an extension I'd like to bring forward to you. Pepsi Beverage Company has held the contract for the concessions, the equipment, the product, as well as the vending machines at City Hall at the Public Works facility for the past three years. During the construction of the rack, we were able to enter some negotiations with Pepsi in terms of providing some scoreboards for us at the rack at no cost to the city, as well as increase the annual donation that Pepsi provides to the Parks and Rec Department for our sports programs and things. It's a very favorable extension for the city. They've had excellent customer service. We're very pleased with what we've been provided and happy to recommend this contract extension to the council tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone? Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further, I'd entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3449.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve Bill 3449, award of contract, beverage vending and supply services contract.
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3449. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, 8-0. That concludes new business. We'll now move on to public comments. Anyone from the public would like to address the council this evening, please step forward and identify yourself for the record, and keep your comments to a maximum of five minutes. Still no one. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to mayor/council communication. Don't know that we're all talked out yet, but we'll see what, how that goes. Mr. Holman, I'll have you start us off tonight, sir.
I do have two minor items, sir. One is I just want to thank you for recognizing telecommunications week. I think that honor and the presentation is well-deserved by our incredible staff within the police department, especially our, and I'm still old enough, I use the term dispatcher, even though that's not proper. And the last thing I had, but actually a question for Chief Zimmerman, I should have asked earlier. So were you eight or nine when you began dispatching with a 40-year career? Got it. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to, I do appreciate you recognizing the public safety telecommunications workers that we have, or dispatchers here. I know they do a very difficult job. I know part of the Citizen Police Academy, is you get to go down there just for a few minutes and have kind of a snapshot of them working, and I will tell you, it's very complex. And I am a layman, and I listened to that audio, and I thought it was a foreign language, actually. I mean, I could hear a couple of things going on, but it actually, I could, I could not do that job. I could feel my blood pressure going up, and all I was doing was listening to something after it happened. So I, my hat is off to them. They do such a good service. They, they make everything work in our, in our public safety and with our first responders. So it is a very, very important job, and I appreciate you recognizing them. Again, and I did not, I missed an opportunity, I'm going to take it now. I didn't thank the voters for Ward 3, for their faith and trust for allowing me to serve on my third term. I do not take it lightly, and I'm honored to do it and humbled to do it, and I'm there to serve them, as well as everybody in Raymore. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Abdalgobodan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank you for recognizing the dispatchers, the tele, safety, public safety telecommunications. That proclamation said, protection of life, it said, safety of our first responders. Those are just two of the very, very important things that they do. That team has someone working 24/7, even on the holidays. They always have people there to protect the citizens in Raymore. Really, anyone who's 911 called gets sent here. It's not necessarily a citizen of Raymore. And protecting, of course, dear to my heart, the first responders. Ali started as a dispatcher as well, and so way, way back then, they used to let other people sit in dispatch for hours at a time, and so as his new wife, I spent several hours in dispatch, and even when he started on the road, wives used to get to ride with the officers. So I've spent lots of hours listening to dispatchers, listening to the radio, and even when he first started, and I was at home and he was at work, I'd have the radio on, you know, listening to see what was going on, and... And it is a different language, the codes they use and all of that, but it's amazing. And I know, he talked about, when he did that job, how hard it was to be in that room, listening on the phone, communicating with people via the computer and the radio, but really unable to do anything, and how hard that was. And lots of times, too, they don't get to hear the rest of the story. They don't get to find out what happened when that person was taken to the hospital. They don't get to find out, you know, did everybody get out of the house that was on fire? Did the other houses around it catch on fire as well? So, it's a tough job, and so, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank all of our dispatchers here for all that they do for my husband, but also for all of the first responders and the community. Thank you.
Mr. Berenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will continue the theme here of thanking you for recognizing the public safety telecommunications, I wrote that down, so I'd say that right, department. I've had a few occasions where I have had to call them in the last few years, and very, very amazing professionals. Very calming, and we had one very stressful situation, we had to call them, and it was my wife freaking out on the phone. But it was a very, they were very calming, and EMS arrived very quickly. So, to the citizens of our city, our response time, I believe, Chief, is well under two minutes, average, usually. And that's
Yes, sir.
pretty amazing response time. So, we're very fortunate to live in a community that has not only great public safety telecommunications officers, but the entire EMS department from the police department, even South Metro Fire. So, I just want to point that out, and thank those people as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to continue the theme of thanking our telecommunications workers as well. And also, taking a step further, I recall one day coming to City Hall to conduct some business on a real quick matter, and one of our dispatchers had happened to take leave from the office, because apparently, one of the calls that he was on was very distressful. He had to take a moment from that call. So, hearing the call tonight, and I'll echo with Councilmember Abdellouane spoke to, I could pick out a couple of things, but a lot of the noise in the background, to me, it was noise. But that was a calming call. It wasn't necessarily someone in distress and stressful call, and hearing screaming, which you would think from an accident in the background. But I can imagine, from visualizing that gentleman and seeing him needing a moment, having a bottle of water to recompose himself for a few minutes before going back on the job, for a chief gentleman said, "For twelve-hour shifts." And having to, you know, move on to the next call, and still have that calming presence for the person making the call. So, I believe our city has also a program to help our dispatchers in those instances, so that they are well, their wellness and their well-being. So, I appreciate staff and the council for putting those programs together to help them as they are helping others in a period of distress. Because it's not always the calming, helping the kitty out of the tree. It's something more stressful, and even though the call, as I said earlier, wasn't, it was a traumatic incident, the callers were rather calm for the version that was played to us tonight, but they're not always that way. Now, dispatchers need time to recompose themselves. So, I thank South Metro for providing the cookies. I did want, I didn't want to impose on a gentleman in that instance, because I just wanted to allow him to have his space. But hearing that, and hearing the report that Chief Zimmerman put out tonight, was very sobering. And the call of duty for the type of person who takes that and accepts that position is great. I appreciate what they do, and seeing it firsthand from that instance, really hammered at home for me, and then hearing it again tonight, and I think I've had others before. But just hearing it and seeing the work that they do, and for the area that they support, is very encouraging. So, I appreciate them, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for also recognizing them again. But then, thanks.
Mr. Jacobson.
Well, hate to sound like a broken record, but I also want to thank you, sir, for doing the proclamation this evening. I have some idea of what the, and this is a new term, I mean, public safety telecommunications. I've always known them as dispatchers myself. But I really appreciate you doing the proclamation, and predominantly, one of the main things I really enjoyed about it was, I think I knew some of the things that they did, but I never stopped to think of everything that they have to have in their mind, and what they have to do, and what they have to deal with. And it is an incredible amount. And I think we should all be in awe, certainly I am, of what they can do. The second thing I really enjoyed about this was, for those of us who were here for the council forum, those who were running for office, and I think everybody was here in some capacity, whether they were up here or they were out in the audience, we were asked a question about staffing, and whether we had, you know, whether we had overdone ourselves with staffing. And I think this proves right here, just exactly, I mean, you heard, I don't know, and again, I can't tell you how many people were on this call, but you heard various individuals handling a lot, had a lot of balls in the air, and they were handling it very well. So, not only is our staffing, in my opinion, right where it needs to be, or perhaps we even need more after listening to that, after listening to that call, but it also shows the quality of our staff. And as I said earlier this evening, I have the highest regard for this staff, I always have. And this, this evening, the public safety telecommunications and Chief are carrying the flag for that. And I really want to congratulate you for that, and thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But I wanted to echo some of the other things. The main thing that I think our telecommunications do is, they are able to listen to so many different things at once and figure out what's important. What are the most important facts, while they maybe disregard somebody that's in the background of that phone, that's there saying something that maybe doesn't have anything to do with what the actual caller is saying. But sometimes, that background noise does have information that's vital as well. But it's, it's, it's very difficult to listen, like watching a cafeteria full of high school students, to listen and listen to what maybe is unimportant, but other things that jump out that are important, that they need to be able to differentiate between one and the other. And also remembering that when we call them, certainly when I call, I'm not at my best. And so, they are meeting us when we are at our most distressed, most disorganized, most unable to communicate effectively, and they are helping us through that, and that's tremendous. I also wanted to say that I got an opportunity to go to a presentation that was given at Centerview last week by the You Matter, Raypack group. And I was, I was fortunate, I called Councilman Townsend at the last minute, thinking maybe he would have some interest in going, and I was surprised he came with me. And we listened to a really good presentation on suicide, and some of the ways that we need to look at how suicide is discussed in our society, because it is, it's another health initiative. It's another, you know, when someone has mental health issues, you don't say they are mental health. You don't say someone's a cancer patient. You have to describe what it is that they're going through, and trying not to make them want to shut down and not communicate. The presentation was put on by one of my former students that was really proud of her. She was, I've always liked to say, her name is Dr. Erin Jewell Burks. She's a graduate of Raypack. And I've often felt that, I started out in pre-med and then went into education, and I've often felt that, I know that throughout my career, there'll be at least one person that goes out and is a better doctor than I could ever be. And I'm really glad that she's going to be staying within a, within our community and working at the new Compass Health Center. So, even though I watched the trees come down, and that made me a little sad, it's going to be a beautiful facility when it's done, and we'll have really quality professionals over there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Circo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of just tagging to everything on the telecommunications, I sat there and listened to that, and I was totally confused. And I'm trying to hear the different things. It's like you hear all something in space or something, all this noise and all this clamor and all these voices. And they're making heads and tails of it, and I'm trying to figure it out, and they're in a serious situation, our telecommunications people. And they're making on-the-spot decisions, they're getting the police, they're getting fired, they're getting things done, they're talking to these people who are rational. And they're making it happen so cool, calmly and special, and they were listening to everything that was saying, and I'm going, "What is that?" And but they were sitting there smiling, they knew everything, and that's just how important that is, that we have great people that can do that and trained, and they understand it. And I think I can say for the staff, when I look out here, you see the men and women who head up our staff, our city, our chief, Nathan, Matt. When I see and I talk to not only the staff leaders of the city, but there are people under it, and there are actual, all their employees that are under it, that is not regular employees. I see these people as, they don't come to work for a paycheck and a forty-hour job. They come to work because they love the city of Raymore. You can see it, you hear them, they love being here, they want to give a hundred and ten percent. They really love their jobs and why they're here and love to be here, and you can see that in each and every one, and when you communicate with any of them, they're very happy. It's just not a job and go home. They love what they do, and each, every one of you, I applaud you for your leadership and how much you do care for the city, you can see it, and on all of you. And we appreciate that, because that's what makes the city work so well, because of the love for the city. Again, I think that, I thank and congratulate all the re-elected and elected, Mr. Jacobson and our mayor and everybody, and they did a fine job, and thank, you know, congratulate them for another term. I guess, they've said a lot, so there's not much more to say, but tag on a lot what they've said. But one thing for Nathan, if you've got Pepsi, make sure you have Dr. Pepper for my wife. Make my wife happy, and I'll be happy. Have Dr. Pepper, please. Diet, I mean diet Dr. Pepper, not just Dr. Pepper. Diet, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I really don't have anything further to add tonight either, than it was my honor to provide that proclamation tonight for their recognition next week, and certainly well-deserved. And again, it was my honor. And it's my honor to serve with all of you up here. I'm excited about the next three years. And with that, we, do we have any need to go to executive session?
We do not, sir.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
I'll second the motion, sir.
Motion been made and seconded, all those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you all.